Okay, we are going to call to order the regular city council meeting for September 10th, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Council members Chalamchela.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Also here.
And Councilmember Roomba is absent and will not be participating this evening via teleconference.
Okay, everybody will join me for the National Anthem or Pledge of Allegiance. I've said that before. Oh, yay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. All those NFL games I watched this weekend. All right, do we have any requests to speak on business from the floor?
No, you don't have any requests to speak this evening under this item.
Okay, last call. This is the part of the meeting where you can address the council on anything that's not already on the agenda. Okay, hearing none, we will move forward to our scheduled presentations.
Okay, the first item tonight under scheduled presentations is a presentation of Spirit of Folsom Awards.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Christine Brainard, Communications Director with the City of Folsom, and I'm really excited to present to you tonight the award recipients of the first annual Spirit of Folsom Awards. This year, the Folsom City Council established the Spirit of Folsom Award Program to recognize community members who have gone above and beyond to contribute and serve their community. So in this new program, each city council member recognizes one community member annually, and those nominees could be residents, volunteers, employees from a Folsom business, or students in a Folsom school. So tonight, each city council member will introduce their nominees. So first up, we have Jeff Ferreira Pro nominated by Mayor Mike Kozlowski. He'd like to join us at the podium.
Yes.
And Jeff, come on down.
Okay, so I have this for you. Wow, that's very nice. Thank you. Now it's on, right? So I was dreading making a selection of just one person to give an award to, and then as I stood there with Christine putting a deadline on me, I realized that I had the right person all along in my head, and it was Jeff Ferreira Pro. Jeff and I met, I want to say it was probably 2010-ish, when I had my first run for city council. I was like a dope, standing out in the middle of Sutter Street, trying to convince people that I'd make a good city council person, and Jeff walked by and started a conversation and helped me understand a lot about Folsom, and over the years has continued to be a good sounding board for things in the historic district and just things regarding Folsom's history. He's been extremely involved in bringing forward and getting off the ground the Chinese History Museum, and is just all around a great guy and a good role model for everybody around here. So congratulations and thank you. All right, very good. Thank you. All right.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Brian Smith, who was nominated by Vice Mayor Sarah Aquino.
Brian Smith is a beloved husband, father, and grandfather. He's also a dedicated volunteer, a respected coach, and a proud veteran who, in his quiet and humble way, embodies the spirit of Folsom. As a volunteer, Brian is a perennial participant in Folsom's Community Service Day and has done minor home repairs for seniors. In early 2022, he adopted the trail under crossing near his home and ensures it stays clean and graffiti-free. As an assistant cross-country and track coach at Vista del Lago, Brian encouraged and inspired hundreds of young runners. He earned their respect and gratitude not just because of his technical expertise, but because of the genuine kindness and interest he showed for everyone who came through the program, from the fastest runner on the team to the slowest. Quote, "I met Coach Brian when I was 14 years old, and his impact on me as a runner and a person remains poignant at the age of 25. I am currently training for a half marathon, and I repeat to myself what Coach Brian always told me when we ran together: Relax your hands and shoulders, let gravity do the work." This former member of the Vista Cross Country team explained that she and Coach Brian often ran together after he noticed that she frequently ran by herself at practice. As a veteran, Brian continues to honor the memory of those with whom he served. For the past 10 years, he has spoken to the U.S. history classes at Vista del Lago about his experiences during the Vietnam War. Vista teacher Kelly Becaro describes Brian's visits this way: "His talks are more than just recounts of history; they are powerful lessons on sacrifice, resilience, and the cost of war." Each year, our students are moved by his honesty and bravery. They leave his presentations with a deeper understanding of history, a greater appreciation for the sacrifices made by our veterans, and a renewed sense of responsibility as citizens. His willingness to revisit painful memories for the benefit of our students speaks volumes about his character. It is for these reasons and more that I'm honored to present Brian Smith of District Three the 2024 Spirit of Folsom Award. Congratulations.
Greater appreciation of the sacrifice made by our veterans. Have we missed? Tony, sorry. Oh, that's okay. Is this Brian's wife, Tony, and his daughter, Anna? Councilmember Chalamchela will be announcing the next several nominees and recipients. Next up is Jeff Moore, who was nominated by Councilmember Anna Roomba, and YK will be presenting the award.
Jeff, now I know you, with the VFW hat and for all the service. This is how I see him all the time, whenever I go to the, you know, VFW or Veterans Day Parade and everything. Well, Jeff, let's hold the Proud Spirit Award, you know, from the City of Folsom. Let's give him a round of applause, you know, he deserves this one. It is, that's the great moment. I'm going to read a few words here about Jeff. Jeff and his wife Lori and the family, he always appears as a family. Thank you again for being behind him and making him a great dad and great husband as well. Jeff, to his commitment to our country, you know, three deployments to Middle East, that's huge. He has seen the world on the other side, especially standing at the front line. Thank you, thank you. That's a fearless service to our country. And not only that, when he come home, he helped Oak Chan Elementary when they were designing how the security system should be putting in place. I was there, in fact, this morning at the Oak Chan. I can see it, now I can see the man behind it. It's very, very important to secure our schools. Thank you again for your service. And not only that, his wonderful wife Lori, you have been a big support for him, and your little things, like helping your neighbor fixing the sprinklers, that senior neighbor. It's important. That's what those two kids are going to be learning and making a great citizens and a great human being and great neighbors to our country. Jeff, for your unwavering service to our country, the city council is recognizing you with the Spirit Award. Thank you so much for everything you do. Would you like, yes, sir? Jeff said he has a more prepared speech, that's why I cut my speech short. Just kidding.
It'll be short, I promise. So first, I want to thank Anna Roomba, and I want to thank my neighbor Daniel Groot, who nominated me. I'm extremely honored to have this award. I want to thank my beautiful wife Lori, who brought us here to Folsom in 2005 when I was deployed. She did her homework and found this wonderful city. My kids, thank you guys so much, Madison and James. When you're deployed, you count every day to come home, and I know my fellow vet knows that. It's however many days plus one wake-up, and we're coming home, and you make yourselves a lot of promises, what you want to do. You want to coach track, okay, for my daughter, and you want to coach football and lacrosse, and you want to give back, because you just pray every day, you make it home so you can give back. So I want to thank you all for all the vets, all the combat vets, and because this community is very special, we have one of the best veterans halls I've ever seen, thanks to this city. We know your support, we have a great parade, thank you so much to the citizens in this city council, to the mayor, thank you, I call him Coach, we did coach together. Yeah, it's, Coach and I were standing next to each other at our last Memorial Day celebration, and we noticed the lanyard for the flagpole wasn't going up very well, you were there, and he leaned over and says, well, let's see what we can do. And about two days later, I think it was fixed, so thank you very much. Thank you, Folsom, for being a great community for combat vets to come home to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jeff, I know, I think, thank you for bringing Anna Roomba's name, you know, to be honest, Anna Roomba is the one, you know, nominated you for this, and she can't make it here, and I'm presenting on her behalf. Thank you again.
Yes.
Okay, and our next nominee is Sandy Zabukos, who was also, was nominated by Councilmember YK Chalamchela.
Sandy, come on in. Sandy Zabuko, where are those feral cats here? Can you guys check around somewhere here? Check, check. Well, we don't have here. That's the start, you know, Sandy's, thank you again. You know, before I start reading, you know, some of these highlights, Joyce Herbeck?
Yes, she's right over there.
Ah, thank you, and thank you for bringing Sandy here and bringing to, you know, even though we see her on the social media, but this is more official here, thank you again. And your older son is the reason for this one.
Yeah.
In a parking lot, and a feral cat was coming and asking, you know, please convey the thanks to him. You know, sometimes kids can be our inspiration too, to take up some, you know, noble things in our, in our town. And she does her own money, her own money, to put the cameras, traps, to find those, and go through that three-step process: trap, neuter, and return. Otherwise, if we let those feral cats around, I don't know how many people have seen, every year, they can give, you know, almost close to 20 kittens. You know, if you do the math right, math is my major, I don't want to do now, right now, math, because every, every parking lot is going to be filled with our feral cats. Thank you again for your, you know, support and service for this town. I know we talk about the economic development, public safety, and all those, these things are equally important to keep our town safe, and also, as a fellow human being for another life, giving, you know, an opportunity to take care of them as well. Thank you again for your support. Give her a big round of applause, please. Do you like to say a word or two?
Just, just please spay and neuter your pets, it's very important, you know, I won't have to do as much if everybody else spays and neuters, so that's, yep, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you again. Awesome.
And YK Chalamchela, Councilmember Chalamchela also nominated Deanne Wren, AKA The Dog Whisperer, but she had another conflict, scheduling conflict tonight, so she wasn't able to be here. Did you come to say?
I'll certainly, you know, thank you again, our town, for nominating such a wonderful people. I was going through all the nominations, I saw the cat, and I was impressed, and I'm almost selected, Sandy, Sandy, and then I read the dogs. Deanne, right? Has, you guys have seen any, only dog movie? Dogs and Cats, right? It's always, no, that's not the point. Oh, Deanne, you know, she is such a wonderful lady, and I know unfortunately, she can't make it here. I have a nice, you know, write-up about her, but, you know, we are going to be presenting her in a different way for her, and we will be giving, you know, some social media recognition for her as well, for all her hard work. Christine, thank you so much again.
Okay, and last but certainly, certainly not least is Steve Hurd, who was nominated
Good evening, everyone. Steve Hurd is actually Mr. Folsom, and I'll explain why. When Steve Hurd moved to Folsom from the Bay Area, when Steve Hurd moved to Folsom from the Bay Area in 2001, he thought it would be temporary, staying until his daughter's graduation from high school, and then needed back to the Bay Area. He was determined to get involved in the community while he was here and wanted to have an impact. He started out as a volunteer for the Chamber of Commerce, helped being set up with the Folsom Pro Rodeo, and volunteer and coordinator for the cattle drive and parade, and then settling up and emceeing at Folsom Live. He served as a chamber ambassador while giving new businesses to the community and eventually chairman of the board. Steve cares about youth in the community and served as a board member for the Folsom-Cordoba Community Partnership as a mentor for Roots and Horizons, mentoring the children of incarcerated parents and worked to organize PEP, Parent Empowerment Programs, addressing issues such as Folsom's teen drugs and alcohol abuse and online safety. As a 2008 graduate of the Folsom Leadership Academy, Steve worked on the project creating and outfitting an after-school homework and social space at Powerhouse Ministries. An advocate for the arts, Steve served as a commissioner and as a chairman of the City of Folsom Arts and Culture Commission for 10 years, where he oversaw art grants and worked on the selection committees for Folsom Public Arts Project, including the Johnny Cash Trail. He contributed to the funding of the Johnny Cash art pieces and sponsored one of Hearts from the Heartbeat of Folsom's Public Art Projects, which you can see at the Folsom History Museum. A lover of music, Steve produced a series of free jazz concerts in the historic district using his own funds and soliciting donations from local businesses. Today, Steve still serves on the board with the Chamber of Commerce, volunteers for the Foothill Wine Festival, and still volunteers for the Folsom Pro Rodeo. Using the platform of his website, myfolsom.com, Steve writes about the community and provides a guide for visitors and residents, and gives free exposure to nonprofit organizations. All of this in addition to his duties as a husband, father, grandfather, and realtor. Today, his daughters are in their 30s, and Steve's still here. He recently helped his daughter Jenny and her family move back to Folsom, drawn by the great school's safety and quality of life, which Steve has had a hand in. Steve Hurd is quite an amazing person. Well, I got to tell you, when I was first opening up a business and the word got out that I was opening up, he contacted me and said, how can I help you? Is there anything that you need? And that is something that you just don't forget as a business owner who quite doesn't know what they're doing to get it open, but Steve reached out. Later, we find out, we have so much in common, we're both natives of San Francisco, we somehow along, as time goes on, we find ourselves having mutual friends and acquaintances, and everybody always speaks so highly of Steve Hurd. Steve, do you want to make a couple comments?
Wow. Thanks, Roe. And actually, we found out we're from the same neighborhood. She lived just over the hill from me, I was out in Dolores, she was in Oe Valley. Anyway, thank you so much, Rosario and city council, and really, this kind of award can go to almost anyone in town. This, this Folsom spirit is very contagious, and it's not just the police and fire, I mean, we depend on them, but it's the people who support the police and fire and who make this town great, not just me, but just about anyone in here. So I do encourage everyone to keep getting involved and look forward to who gets this next year. So thank you so much, neighbor.
Well, a big congratulations and thank you to our community members and recipients of the Spirit of Folsom Award tonight. In addition to tonight's recognition, we'll also spotlight our award winners on social media, on the city's website, and we're going to get a banner display featuring the winners, the open display in the lobby here at City Hall. So that concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Very good, excellent. Congratulations to everybody. All right, from one good news story to another, please call the next item.
Okay, the next item under scheduled presentations tonight is item number two, presentation of the 11th Annual Folsom Community Service Day.
Just for the record, Jim Harville is wearing his Community Service Day T-shirt from 2015? I think that's the oldest one I've seen. Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Tom Hellman with the Parks Recreation Department, and I have the pleasure of helping to lead this year's event yet again, and so before without, we get started, I'd like to invite up all of my steering committee members. I think you can spot them in the crowd, in these beautiful shirts that we have for our project leaders this year, as well as our steering committee members. If you're kind to us this evening, we might be able to distribute to some of you tonight. But I'd like to introduce Sandy Economy, who is our chair of the steering committee for this year, to kick off the presentation and share a little bit about what's on the horizon here in the next two weeks.
Great, thanks, Tom.
Well, it's so great to be here and to be presenting to you guys. I know this having, Community Service Day, I can say that. It's not a new thing, it's our 11th year, but it's always new and different and fun, and so, here we go. How do we go to the difference? Thank you. So here we have the list of everyone that has been phenomenal to work with thus far and have just done an outstanding job. We have a few of us here, which is wonderful, and each one has been a joy to work with. There we go. And so this year, Saturday, September 21st, again, the third Saturday, right now, we have over 2,000 volunteers. We still have 84% of the volunteer spots filled, which means we still need a few more volunteers. We do, are still getting the word out, there's still opportunity to sign up, and hopefully we've made it very easy. Christine's done a phenomenal job getting things out there, so we are believing for even more volunteers this year. And there we are from last year, in our phenomenal blue and, yes, tie-dye shirts. So we sort of thought this might be the appropriate time to allow you to receive your shirt as well. Thank you, Tom. I personally love the pink in the shirt, that's kind of my color, but as you can see, you have multiple color choices to choose from, so rock your own color.
The project animals are back in the logo.
Oh, definitely, yes. And the owl continues to say, what does the owl say? Good grief. Nice work. Yes. Well, we have to include all those lovely animals. So I just wanted to quickly go through the names of our sponsors, because we have been blessed with great sponsors once again this year. So presenting sponsor, $15,000, Dignity Health. Visionary sponsors at $10,000, Lakeside Church, Lennar Homes, Style Media Group, Style Magazine, Folsom Times, and Good Fellow Brothers. And then at $5,000, we have the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, the Folsom Telegraph, the Palladio, and Habitat for Humanity of Greater Sacramento. And then our partner sponsors, $3,000, Rotary Club of Folsom, Kaiser Permanente, Kikoman, Elliott Homes, Doc and Engineering, Micron, Winco Foods, and American Logo wear. And then lastly, our good neighbor sponsors at $1,500, American River Ace Hardware, Sierra Marlins, Choose Folsom, Big Wave Coffee House, and a first-time sponsor, Smud. And I neglected to say, some of these are in-kind donations, other than the presenting And we have $113,000 cash and in-kind sponsorships and counting. Sam's Club stepped up today, so yay for another one. And now we're going to tag team back, and Mr. Tom's going to talk about some of the specific projects that we are doing.
Thank you, Sandy. Yes, so on your screen, 38 projects have been identified for our community, these are just a sampling of some of those projects. In the white, the yellow reflects some of the work that would be done at those project sites, just some to take note of. Folsom City Zoo Sanctuary is getting a re-roof of the gift shop and the ticket booth there in the front. We'll have some school beautification projects at Natomas Station Elementary, Folsom Middle School, and Folsom High School, and as Sandy alluded to, there are still lots of openings in those spots, if those wishing to be participating and volunteering, those would be a great opportunity to get involved there. We have the Folsom Athletic Association engaged again, they're going to go out to various sports fields, and there's green sheds at a lot of our sports fields where sports organization keeps their equipment, they're going to paint those up as the weather takes a toll on them. We've got some tree planting, some cleanup around our trails. We've partnered with Dignity Health as our presenting sponsor, they're going to do a garden renovation out at their site, some work at the golf course, and as Jeff, our Folsom veteran, was talking about, they're doing a project at the Veterans Hall this year as well, which is going to be great out there. Our Neighbors Helping Seniors Project is a great, kind of an addition to Community Service Day, right? And this year, we saw a great increase in that need with 88 projects identified, roughly about 17% increase. We're still also looking for volunteers in Neighbors Helping Seniors Project, so if you're interested in helping on September 1st, that would be another avenue for folks to register and get signed up for, to help out in those various projects at residents throughout the community. Citywide Food Drive is back on, again, Twin Lakes Food Bank, I just saw recently that their shelves are a little bit shy.
Are you sure? Dump the bag, that everyone should.
Yes, and those bags that Sandy is holding up have been delivered to the doorsteps of homes here in Folsom. 30,000-plus bags were collated by various youth within the faith-based community, stapled and then distributed out there. If you do nothing on September 21st, fill the bag and put it out on your doorstep or out by the street, and we'll be by to pick it up. If you'd like to venture down to Lakeside that morning to deliver your bag, or to Twin Lakes itself, you can do that as well, but fill the bag, put it out the morning of, and we'll be gladly walking by to grab those. To get you inspired, we have a video campaign with the community's food drive that I thought I'd share with you. If you haven't already seen it, maybe you have, but something fun, hopefully sound and audio are working. Audio, do I have audio up there? I don't know why I don't have audio. This was a take of the Joneses.
Perfectly sensible.
Yes, of two community members going at it, of stocking food out onto their doors, or to their street escapes, and kind of combating each other with who can stack more, as each person kind of did it. You might recognize some familiar faces in this video, so thank you to both of them for their contributions, as well as the outside Mr. Jones that decided to outdo them all. So you will find this on the City of Folsom social media platforms, and you can catch the audio and the information, but the important thing out is to put your bag out for September 21st on that day. Also part of Community Service Day is we have a number of a number of donations that we'll be collecting that morning. These are a listing of them. Bicycles, as usual, working with the Folsom State Prison, eyeglasses, yarn and fabric and coats, among many other different things. And just as Sandy alluded to, just today, we had another beneficiary come in with an individual that's gonna be collecting lacrosse equipment for the Folsom Lacrosse Association, gently used materials and equipment to help those as they're getting their participant, participant base up. Also, another thing you can do on the 21st, if you don't want to get out and work on a project, you don't want to help beautify a school, you don't want to leave your food out, you can always give blood. Last year, we had a lot of new donors actually participate in this, which is great. I think there was roughly a little less than 12 pints of blood donated. So we're always looking to get that. It will take place at Fire Station 35 from 10:30 to 2:00 p.m. It is encouraged to get a schedule, and you can either click the QR code or go online and schedule your appointment, or, and get that all set up. And it takes about 30 minutes for you to show up and to give blood to help out. And finally, a big kudos to all these folks, among the folks that couldn't be here. We started planning in March, and I think to what we have coming up in two weeks, a various number of projects, the number of people participating, the number of great sponsors and partners that have come forward to continue to support Community Service Day has been great. I encourage you all to show up Saturday, September 21st. It's at Lakeside Church still. We kick off with a ceremony at 8 o'clock, so please be there before 8 o'clock to join us on stage, where we'll all be on our shirts to welcome everybody. The volunteers this year will be in a nice, vibrant, yellow shirt with black logoing, so you'll be able to see them all around town. And those that have participated for the last 10 years, who knows, we might see some more vintage or retro shirts come out from the past. So welcome. Any questions if you have. I thank you for your support, and I look forward to September 21st.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody. All right, let's move on to item number three.
Okay, item number three, under scheduled presentations, is the Presentation of Final Report from Economic Development Consultant Cosmont Companies. And we do have one request to speak under this item.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Christine Brainard, Communications Director. Tonight, we'll hear a presentation on a recommended economic development action plan for the City of Folsom. There is no formal action requested of you tonight, but if you have any direction for us to bring back at a future date, we would welcome that. The City of Folsom engaged Cosmont Companies to provide expert guidance in developing this plan, which aligns with the City Council's goals and priorities to support economic development. So at this time, Cosmont Companies President Ken Hira will present the firm's findings and recommendations for the city.
Just before he starts, I skipped over the part of the meeting at the beginning where we talk about changes to the agenda. There is an actual update to this particular item and stacks of the slide presentation that they're gonna give back on the back table, in case anybody wants one. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you so much for having us. My name's Ken Hira. I'm the President of Cosmont Companies. I have two colleagues, Clark Whitten, who's here in person, and then another colleague, Tom Girofsky, who I think is online.
He is.
And the good news is that, and City Manager directed me to be relatively brief, I wanted to present the 100-page appendix tonight, or the 75-page full report, but instead, there's just a mere 30 pages that I'm gonna try to get through in a relatively judicious fashion. And we are certainly available, maybe most importantly, for questions and answers. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review a lot of the material, and whatever questions you have, we're here and we're available for that. So, Cosmont Companies has been in business, working in the world of economic development for about 38 years. We've worked with a lot of cities up and down the state of California. No city's the same, no economic development plan or market study or feasibility studies the same. And Folsom's a pretty unique community. We've completed our Phase One, which is called an Economic Development Action Plan. And we've done a variety of things, including review documents, interviewed different stakeholders, you know, brought to fruition the regional economic trends that we find in the marketplace, looked at local, more detailed demographic information, et cetera, toured the city, obviously, and looked at the different, different opportunity sites to come up with some strategies. There is a Phase Two. We can talk about that later. It's really sort of implementation. But for now, this is your plan to absorb and give direction on. I also want to say that it's been very helpful to work with staff, with Elaine and Pam and Christine, in a very sort of diligent fashion, to try to get good direction and good, and good feedback as well. So it's a pretty collaborative effort. There's metrics here that I won't necessarily go through, population, household size. I do look at certain metrics that I think are quite relevant. I mean, your average household income is 178,500. It's significant. You have over 56% of bachelor's degree or greater, so you have a very educated and relatively mature population base. You have, which isn't necessarily on the slide, a significant amount of folks, I think it's 36,000, coming into the city to work every day, in high-tech, high-paying jobs, if you will, as well as some other jobs. And that's more than the people that are leaving the city to go to work elsewhere. Economic trends, what we see is a lot of e-commerce. We see the retail and the impact of the footprint of retail, how people are communicating, how they're consuming, how they're commuting. There's a lot of changes that have gone on recently that impact economic development and economic trends. Consumers driving a lot of that, and technology is driving a lot of that. Teleworking, of course, catalyzed by this pandemic circumstance, means that you've got a lot more folks working from home. And I would say that the home, the residential unit, becomes, in our minds, an economic driver, because in the home, we used to just sleep. All of a sudden, we started shopping, and now we're working. There's a lot more going on in the residential unit, and it does have an impact on land use relative to the demand for brick-and-mortar retail, office, industrial, et cetera. You have 6 million square feet of retail, give or take. And the vacancy had been a little bit higher in the past. It's at 3%. And the reality of what 3% represents is a very, very healthy retail vacancy level. The office market is about 5.4 million square feet, and what you'll find is a little bit higher vacancy. We also did a comparison to other communities, 8% is your vacancy here in Folsom. You can see that it's much higher in some of the other communities that are adjacent for comparative purposes, and there's much bigger office markets. The office market is challenged these days, partly because of the work-from-home concept and the efficiencies that businesses are trying to find in their operations and employees. Industrial market is relatively small, 1.7 million square feet, 3.5% vacancy. We see a lot of industrial markets, big and small, with very, very low vacancies. And that also tells you that while retail might be right sizing, you know, what I've found is that our country has too much retail. And as it right sizes and shrinks, if you will, finds its place, the industrial market is growing, because the way the products are being consumed today has a lot to do with what we're doing on e-commerce. E-commerce represents about a trillion dollars of sales tax, sales revenue, which is pretty significant. So we look at all of these things holistically for you all. Multifamily, you've got a pretty decent base. As I drove the whole city, tried to drive the whole city today, see a lot of multifamily being built. You know, we're in a massive housing shortage. Arena requirements are at 6,400. It is good to bring more residential to the market, because it can increase your tax base, increase spending power, and obviously solve a housing problem. And then hospitality, you've got about 4,900 rooms in the city. The hotel business through COVID, which was fascinating to me. The Nike swoosh recovery, if you heard of that, it was, was it gonna be a V, was it gonna be a U? How would the hotel market come back? Significant impact during the pandemic, but there's been a pretty decent comeback, mostly driven by the visitors to the hospitality industry, and a little less so for the business commuter. Placer AI is a pretty powerful tool, mobile data analytics. It tracks our phones, wherever you are, for seven minutes. It knows you've taken a trip somewhere. If you're at work, you're at the store. So we've used that for each, each one of your major shopping center districts, and all that analytics are back in the appendix, if you will. But this is to say that the visitor versus the employee post-pandemic have come back to pre-pandemic levels. Not to the same degree, but they've come back, which means you have workers coming into town, and you have visitors coming into town, visitors who want to come and shop here, so to speak. And so we looked at Placer, and we use that for different districts. This is just one example of the regionality of one of your centers, which is the outlet center. A lot of your centers have a majority of the folks coming within seven miles. And if you look at your outlet center, 42% come from within seven miles, not 60-some-odd percent. So it has much more of a regional draw. Now, our observations of the outlet center is that it's got tough signage, it's an inside-out shopping center, it's something that, in my opinion, isn't experiential, if that's what we're looking for, like your historic downtown. So it's an area to keep an eye on, and frankly, to concentrate on, as to how, how successful that asset is. Including the Central Business District, going back to that for a second, which has the Walmart and the Kohl's, et cetera. So the role of economic development, you know, as a definition, it's something that wants to grow economics, it wants to create a quality of life for a community. At the end of the day, the strategies are gonna vary. And so it can assist a city in achieving those goals, helping the tax base, facilitating growth of businesses, and helping to focus on business expansion, attraction, and retention. We had stakeholder outreach that gave relatively positive feedback. There wasn't a significant amount, in our opinion, of necessarily negative commentary. There was some commentary about small businesses and the permitting and design review process that they found wasn't consistent. And then one of the other comments that we found from stakeholders was just a coordination and collaboration with staff, and having a by-the-book approach. Maybe that's not a bad thing, but that was their observation. Strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities. We find that the list of weaknesses and threats is short, frankly. And sometimes we go into these assignments, if you will, or try to create strategies for cities, and I like to say, sometimes things aren't broken. When they're broken, they gotta be fixed. And there are things. There are permit processes and design review processes, and maybe vacancies in other communities that do need to be fixed. It isn't like many things are necessarily broken. And in our estimation, in Folsom, it's, you've got a balanced tax revenue sources for your budget. Vacancies, like I say, are pretty low. You know, there are some limitations, frankly, and there's a lot of strengths. You know, it's a strong community. There's strong community assets, if you will, natural resources, and a pretty significant tech labor base. Opportunities, historic Folsom, Central Business District, leveraging the technology, light rail system, which is, you know, opportunities for transit, transit-oriented development. You know, that's to bring some more of that dense residential where transit stations are located. Use of public financing and value capture, I'll talk a little bit more about that, but it is a tool that can be used from a zoning perspective. The Folsom Plan area, obviously, additional annexations, potentially south of 50, your sales tax measure that's coming up. All things considered, you're pretty well positioned for this, this high-tech job base and quality of life for residents. Some of the action items is to focus in on some of the business incentive programs, and I've got a list of those. Potentially hiring in-house an economic development department. Let's talk about that for a second. Right now, you're utilizing and collaborating, I think, very well with Choose Folsom. Choose Folsom is doing a lot of economic development activities for the city. Personally, I think that's a really good thing. Does it make sense for you all to have somebody in-house? Because the things that we've laid out here, if any of these are good ideas, someone will need to implement them. And it's not a matter of can staff implement them, but it might be a matter of is there enough resources? Are there enough, is there enough manpower, if you will, womanpower, to implement? And if these are good ideas, then that might be part of that consideration for economic development. And it also helps you prioritize that, because it does become an important priority for the city. Value capture, there's zoning strategies, there's leveraging tools like Development Opportunity Reserve, which is trade-offs for community benefits. There's the potential to create a tax increment financing district. We're working on a lot of those across the state. Your tax apportionment out of every dollar of property tax you get is almost 20 cents. Plus, you get another nickel for the MVLF, which is the vehicle in lieu license fees. You get 25 cents of that dollar. And what we've found with the different cities we work with to create these tax increment financing districts, some cities only get a nickel of the dollar. It's pretty insignificant. They're low to no tax, property tax cities. You have currency that might be something you consider to leverage in the future, and it's creating a tax increment district. So I bring that up as something that we call value capture. And then the last set of strategies has to do with the potential annexation. So business incentive programs, we have a whole list of things. You know, fast-tracking permitting, tax sharing agreements, job tax credits. There's an example in Sacramento County that does that, facade improvement programs, infrastructure and different fee strategies. So we use the example of Sacramento County, how there are tax credits given, or prorated credits for impact fees that are given for redevelopment to incentivize them. Business attraction, again, expansion and retention, those strategies, which some of this is implementation. Can you do more outreach? Can you go try to talk to businesses, whether it's corporations or retailers? Should you talk to your current business owners in town? How strong are those relationships? You know, the good news is, at 6 million square feet of retail and 3% vacancy, super solid. The good news is, you have a Target, you have a Home Depot, you have a Lowe's, you have a Costco, you have a Sam's Club. And they have been significant revenue generators. And as I think about retail, and I know the retail world pretty well, those are strong retailers. But we need to keep an eye on those folks, in my opinion, because Sam's Club and Costco in one city, Lowe's and Home Depot in one city, in my opinion, it's keeping an eye on those businesses to see how well they're doing. Can they both coexist on a go-forward basis? So business retention is almost as important, frankly, as business attraction, we found. There's several items, specifically action items. I won't go through many of those performance metrics. There's a way to quantify the success of these programs. Permits, value creation, business licenses, sales tax revenue, hotel tax revenue, surveys, et cetera. There's some quantitative ways to manage the performance of economic development. And then, as I discussed earlier, different value capture zoning tools. Development Opportunity Reserve, which is a zoning strategy, leveraging your own tax increment financing through NAIFD, and/or working with developers to create a CFD, which is a Community Facilities District, on new development. You know, if the outlet mall is something that wants to be redeveloped one day, and Simon Properties is there as an owner who's trying to figure out how to maximize the value of that real estate, that's, that's an important partnership that might come to fruition, where you would collaborate with those folks. I'm doing it as we speak. I'm actually negotiating something with Simon Properties as we speak. And Simon is in a circumstances, one of the largest mall owners in the country, the largest mall owner. They're having to reimagine a lot of their real estate. They're looking at all their malls, as they should, and there are challenges with all malls in our country. So as they look at their financial circumstance, outlets and malls, they're really in the business to reimagine. So what does that partnership look like? Is it a partnership? Is it not? There's a property owner that we also happen to know, who owns the Century Theater. How's that doing? You know, these are in the nooks and crannies, in my opinion, as I drove the city, of the corners. How well is that theater doing compared to Palladio at Broadstone? So I think those things are strong considerations for kind of these public-private partnerships. And placemaking is important. The private sector real estate, as we mentioned, the auto mall has a vacancy. I drove that today as well, the Volkswagen dealership. Is there a way to kind of promote that and advance that cause? The outlets don't have great signage. Are they at their highest and best use? They're close to transit. Could there be transit-oriented development that takes place there? Again, ideas, these are not things that are mandates, needless to say. And then the SciWest property, which owns the Century Theater. And SciWest is a prolific property owner who, you know, is looking to manage their real estate, as well as potentially redevelop some of their real estate. And city assets, there's a few, a couple. And city assets, there's a few, a couple that you own, the corporate yard, which is a significant amount of land, as well as one of the stations that are near transit. That could be considerations for city redevelopment, which of course would be subject to the Surplus Land Act. And then consideration for additional annexation, probably in areas south of fifty. So I'll stop there and would be willing to take questions, certainly. I wanted to just go over that in a high level and probably just more so to think about, to put some ideas out there in, in food for thought for the city of Folsom. Thank you.
Very, very good, okay. Any city council members have questions?
I have questions. Back on page ten, you talked about the retail and, and the impact it's having. Are you seeing that a place like the Palladio versus, let's just say, the Roseville Galleria that has multiple stores that appears to be strong, it appears to always be busy? There's a lot of traction going on there. It has somewhat of a, a difference of, say, a place like the Palladio that has more of your boutique stores that people may not be aware of, that may not draw somebody. And are you seeing a, a significant impact of those two retail type of environments?
Well, what's the comparison to the Palladio you mentioned? You said you used a different property?
What is that?
You compared to the Roseville Galleria.
Roseville Galleria.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which is, Roseville Galleria, is that outdoor, walkable, is it a mall?
There's a regional mall and then there's also a lifestyle center across the street.
I mean.
The lifestyle center part of it is analogous to Palladio.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, that's part of where I was going with it is, you know, I made mention about regional malls. Every regional mall in our country needs to be reinvested because the department store business is becoming obsolete, primarily because of the online circumstance. And department stores don't need two hundred thousand square feet, two hundred and fifty thousand square feet, where we're doing a lot of that online or in more boutique stores. The, the Galleria you mentioned or, or Palladio is more experiential at the end of the day. It's more walkable, it's more boutique, it's more unique. It takes a property owner a little bit more, or it takes a lot, to make sure that's managed well and that the experience for the consumer is positive and interesting. And it's a place to go. So the outdoor place making and the outdoor experiential boutique type of retail is stronger today than certainly any of these enclosed shopping centers. And down in Southern California, there are some significant mall properties, as an example, that I can think of. South Coast Plaza, one of the strongest malls in the world. Fashion Island, which sits on the ocean and Irvine Spectrum, which is an outdoor shopping center. Do you know of all those centers in that area, including Mission Viejo Mall and Laguna Hills Mall and Westminster? Outdoor Irvine Spectrum outperformed all of them during COVID and post COVID.
Yeah.
And because it was lifestyle.
Yeah, I was, you know, retail's always been an interesting thing that I follow. And I, I mean, I was quite surprised that Elk Grove, who's been really huge on economic development, attracted a place like Macy's, you know, and I just, to me, that, I was a bit surprised that. But yet, I, I haven't been there, so I don't know the, I don't know the layout of it, but it was something that was kind of, it was interesting.
Yeah, I mean, I, just to add another point, I put it this way, for a lot of our city clients and a lot of the things that I'm working on, you don't sleep as well at night if there's a mall in your city. You just have something that you have to worry about a little bit more. It's just the reality of it.
Why is that?
Because the department stores are not in business like they used to be.
Right.
So if you took eight hundred thousand square feet and three of those big anchors were two hundred thousand square feet each, which are the department stores, that's six hundred thousand square feet out of the eight hundred.
Yeah.
That's trouble, right? Because then what happens to the other two hundred? So something has to change. And what's happening is uses are blending. Residential is taking place, taking those, entertainment is taking those. Office, when the market was stronger, was taking those. And really frankly, discount retailers, whether it's your general merchandiser like a Target or like a Nordstrom's Rack, have a lot more strength to help support the, the mall type properties, but they have to be blended.
Thank you. On page eleven, you, you kind of delve down into the arena numbers. Was it eleven, oh, maybe go back one?
Yeah, there's a reference to Reno.
Oh, Reno, okay. And so my question here, what, you also, oh yeah, there it is, the fourth bullet on the left side. It talked about the eight year arena requirement of sixty three sixty three. That includes thirty five hundred very low and low income units. Does, does that number, because we're, I think we're short like two thousand on the very low and a thousand on the low. And so does that have an impact on a city's, say, vitality or does it have an impact on its ability to remain strong financially? Because they are low and very low units?
Well, I, I think that if, if you were to look at thirty five hundred units out of the total number of housing stock that you have in the city, it's not a giant percentage, number one. Number two, we are in a massive housing shortage.
Sure.
And the state is trying their best
Yeah.
to impose force.
Yes.
Require.
We're very familiar with that.
Right, and it takes away local control, so there's plenty of tension and controversy there. But we have a massive housing shortage, so the question is just, how does that get resolved? And we've worked in cities where the kids of the folks that grew up, that have longstanding homes in those cities can't afford to live there, including my own family. My daughter can't live in the city that I live in. And so there really just needs to be a balancing act, I think. I don't think that it creates a giant negativity, doesn't have to. I drove a city not long ago, the housing stock was super old. To rehab that and revamp that, even if it was lower income or moderate income housing, would end up being an improvement to house some of the older, older housing stock in that particular instance.
Okay. My next question was on page twenty one. Can you elaborate on what tax credit is? Is that where a city assists in bringing certain jobs or businesses?
Yeah, I, I think it is that, it's getting, giving credits for job creation. The other example that we used was credits for impact fees also that were paid because it tries to lessen the burden of development costs, which right now are very high. And so anything a city can do to help lessen the burden of the private sector. Because at the end of the day, the other thing I haven't really talked a lot about is we need the private sector to invest in our communities. That's the risk capital that wants to come in and build things or rebuild things. So if cities can judiciously provide some cost relief, that's very helpful, because right now, things aren't very feasible from a development perspective. That's the notion behind some of those credits. And that's just an example we used.
Okay, great. And then I also want to make a comment on page twenty nine, when you mentioned the auto mall. About a year and a half ago, no, I think it was last year, about a year and a half ago, with John Sears and Joe Galliardi from Fedcorp and YK and myself, there was, you know, we looked at the possibilities of getting a, you know, used car salesman because historically, the auto mall only wanted brand new car sales. And there's, you know, that was a point when they were struggling and they were looking at the potential of maybe having like a CarMax or, or some other sales, used sales vehicles. It didn't pan out, but do you see any other potential ability to attract that could make that one area that's not used? And it's old because the building needs to be basically demolished, from what I understand. And, and, but it's such a great piece of land for some form of, you know.
Well, the auto industry is another industry that's really been evolving, right? It's been growing and shrinking at the same time, you know? I think that there's risk in auto malls. But when you have a regional draw and the growth that we've seen in your auto sales means that those auto dealerships are pretty healthy, pretty successful, and they represent another, again, area to focus on, they represent a big part. You know, I think you have two billion dollars in sales that we found. You know, half of that was from the auto and from the general merchandisers in your city. So it's important to focus on those and understand what are the needs of that ownership, that vacant Volkswagen dealership? And work with them, because that might be an area where the city wants to potentially help. Because I think the auto industry, you know, maybe it's Tesla, maybe it's a different brand, but it's to understand, you know, what the needs are and what can, what can help. Signage, you know, better access, better curb appeal, better promotion, better marketing. Because that one dealership is in the corner, right? And the other ones are a little bit closer to the street.
Right, I mean, you blink and you see the Ford.
Yeah.
Ford vehicles.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, all right, let's roll my questions.
YK?
Ken, thank you again for a very comprehensive, you know, summary. That's good, it's not a hundred pages. Well, we'll read that. You know, in addition to my colleague, I just want to touch on one. You touched at high level technology, high paying jobs in this town. And we do have, I know our mayor visited Samsung facility recently in South Korea and thanked them for choosing Folsom, right? That's an awesome, you know, gesture from us. Besides Intel, the big, you know, net, you know, thing, Micron, AMD, Qualcomm, right? And HP spinoff, Agilent Technologies, there are quite a few technology companies. So besides the malls and all those, you know, a high paying, a high pay receiving people living in Folsom can spend a little bit generous on our small businesses, right? So in your research, you know, how do we, how do we make that as a hub? Very specific memory chip NAND devices. So any, any, any spin on that one, Ken?
Well, I do think about how important, again, outreach is.
Yeah.
I guess I'll call it marketing. But are there organizations, tech organizations? Because I know there's one in Southern California called Octane, and it's focused on tech and tech growth. So are there trade groups, organizations, traveling to these different places to try to help in the world of business attraction? Is anybody focused on that? Maybe Choose Folsom is focused on that. But again, that might be an area where you try to incentivize those businesses to come. And it might be we're business friendly, and it might be more than that. It might be tax incentives, it might be job incentives, it might be real estate incentives. You know, in terms of if you want to attract those folks. Short of doing that, the market is probably going to drive the demand and location. I think folks already know how Folsom is a pretty tech hub. The other question is, you've got five thousand plus jobs with Intel and you've got a lot of eggs in one tech basket to, to a degree. Those are very, very important jobs. And again, that's keeping an eye on what's Intel doing. Are they hiring, are they shrinking, are they rightsizing? What are they up to? To understand the impact of that presence of that tech company.
Got it, got it. Because I'm looking at the, you know, council action, mayor, last comment on this one. You know, when Rosaria was a mayor and, you know, we visited our venture capitalist firm here. They grew from what, ten millions to three hundred millions? The, the venture capitalists, they, they were pretty happy, you know, seeing us at their doorsteps. So and, and Vice Mayor Aquino and myself, we went for ribbon cutting on Qualcomm. But what, as a council, our initiative, like mayor did for that, that's what I'm more looking, maybe in your hundred page document, that way, we've got to be the drivers, you know, one way or another. We can't give all the time, you know, free, free, you know, incentives all the time, right? Those gestures, yeah, we are here at your doorsteps, right? So that's kind of your success stories, you know, somewhere based on your experience, Ken?
I don't have any direct success stories, frankly, on that whole, let's attract a tech, you know, company per se. But I think it's something that can be part of a priority or an implementation plan. And maybe it's collaborating with Choose Folsom on that.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor Kozlowski, I have a question. So this report that we have is, looks like a, what is it, seventy page? Why do we get a smaller presentation here than what we have on hand?
He was picking the highlights out of it, so that was a.
This is his PowerPoint.
Oh, okay. Because I, because there's, there's some, I mean, there's some pages in here that would have been kind of more interesting to go through when we looked at as the whole entire presentation.
Yeah, we tried to create an executive summary
Sure.
to, to answer your question. All the slides that were there were in the longer report, but I'm willing, happy to try to answer some of those other questions as well. Just wanted to be succinct about what we presented. There's a lot of material that are.
Yeah, there's a lot of, actually, there's a lot of really good material that, in, in my personal opinion, would have been great to go through for the sake of the public because it was quite a huge investment that we made in, in, in this. And so I think just, you know, I mean, I. I'm good.
Good. So I, just a quick follow up question for, from YK's. So, so one of the, one of the points that's made in here is that a strategy that you could, you could sort of point towards is I'm trying to achieve business expansion, attraction and retention. Okay, you pick your industry, but that's a starting point in terms of goals. In, excuse me, in in the tech sector, and not to, you know, focus exclusively on that, but just to follow up on your question, what would be the metric or metrics that would be most important to follow to see if any given set of activities was being, was getting you the results that you want?
Well, I think it could be education levels, I think it could be, could be income levels. It could be, you know, you have more people coming into town, working at those jo, at the job base than leaving. So the more people that are being attracted, if you take the entertainment industry down in Southern California, the city of Burbank had like a, you know, a job housing ratio, which was something you thought was inverse to what it should be, right? It was like sixteen to one. And they had so many jobs and so many people coming into that city, which creates a different issue to a degree, whether it's traffic or congestion. But then you're going to have a housing and a a job, you know, qualification question. Because I think some of those tech firms are going to say, where are my, where are my folks living?
Yeah, so what's a, what's a healthy ratio, if that was something we were using? I mean, what, what, because that, that is completely sensible, that that would be a ratio you'd want to keep an eye on.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, we look at jobs housing balance, which, which you.
What constitutes balance?
Well, that's the question, and we compare it oftentimes to the county.
Okay.
Also, the job ratio, which is in our report, how, how many more people come in
Right.
than leave? And when that number's greater than one, you're above equilibrium, if you will, if that makes sense, right? So one, one point two, one point four, one point six. I mean, those are very, very healthy ratios, but then that also puts some pressure on trying to create more housing.
Yeah, of course.
And that's, I think that's what a lot of the corporations look for. What, where's my job force? How long are they driving? What are their educational levels? What are their qualification levels? Also, what's the cost to do in business?
Okay, very good, thank you. Adam Vice Mayor.
So you do have several pages in your report where you compare Folsom to Roseville, Elk Grove, Rancho Cordova. You touched on, for example, the vacancy rates or the, you know, the square, square footage rate. But you also compare their economic development in-house staff to ours, which is non-existent. You compare maybe incentive programs that they offer. We don't have that. Are, are you implying that those cities are doing something that we're not and that we should be doing? Or that they are having a greater level of success than we are because of things that they're doing that we're not?
I think what we find is that, I guess it's a bit of a barometer, is, is economic development this concept, you know, a priority or not for the city? development this concept, you know, a priority or not for the city? I mean, it's not a, it's not that it's not a priority for the city of Folsom. What are the resources being associated with that or attributed to that? And part of this exercise, part of the one exercise we did was to try to compare to some of those other cities that were facing high growth or that prioritized economic development. When you compare full-time equivalents, FTEs, and there's four, or three, or two, or five in some cities, and I think at Folsom it was zero, from a pure economic development perspective, then that tells us, okay, is it getting done a different way? Is it through Choose Folsom? Or does it make some sense to bring some staff, some department in-house? We did work for the city of Santa Barbara, and we focused on State Street. And it's a different example. I use this analogy a lot, lots of vacancy on State Street, the iconic destination, you know, at the coast in Santa Barbara, and they had no economic development staff. And maybe they didn't need one, a staff, for the years and years that 10 blocks of retail was occupied. All of a sudden, they faced major vacancies and other issues surrounding vacancies, vagrancies and homelessness, et cetera. So we said, well, maybe it's time to prioritize that from a staffing perspective. Get some folks in-house, maybe an economic development manager, and really work and pound the pavement on how that either vacancy can be improved, or new land uses could be introduced, you know, or maybe there's an ombudsman type that can be a coordinator for the permitting process. In that case, in Santa Barbara, it's painful for a small business to get a permit. It just is. And I told the council that because it was really tough to hear 200 people say that it's hard to get a permit in the city. That was that example, Santa Barbara. I don't know that that's what's going on right here, but I think the resources of the city surrounding you was something we just wanted to look at and compare. And our recommendation is, yeah, take, consider someone in-house that is, has an economic development background, has a title, has some, that, that, and they're focused on that. And the question for you all is, okay, is that, is Choose Folsom the, the way to go and to keep leveraging our economic development resources? Or is it to bring, maybe have somebody in-house to dedicate to that exercise and report to the city manager? Both, certainly. And then, you know, we can talk about how you implement an EDAP like this as well.
So you mentioned a 100-page appendix, and, and maybe that's the problem because we didn't see that, that was not attached to our agenda, if, if there is such a thing. I guess because the part that's, that I'm wanting to see that's not in here, and maybe this doesn't happen in the first phase, is, is where's the analysis? I mean, so let's just say, for example, a couple of the cities talked about, they have these facade improvement programs, right? Where maybe a, a business in the central business district, we want to say, hey, here's $10,000 for you to improve your facade. But I think in order for us to commit those types of funds, we need to know that that $10,000 investment is going to result in increased property tax revenue and increased sales tax revenue to the city. So is that, has that analysis been done as part of this?
We really, I think what you saw in the longer report, which was 75 pages, had the comparison to the other cities. That's the extent to which we analyzed that part of this effort. Because we didn't, we didn't go much deeper than that, but it was a research assignment, a research piece that we wanted to bring to fruition for you all. I think on implementation, what do we do now? Perhaps that's an area to focus on and spend some time, analyzing what's our return on investment.
Right.
And that's a very fair question.
Okay. So you, I didn't see anything, anywhere mention the kind of, that Folsom is kind of becoming this healthcare hub, where we've got the four major health systems in the region who are all building or planning to build in the city?
Yeah. We had so many assets that we identified, maybe we didn't focus on that. You have Kaiser, you have the...
Satter, Dignity, and UC Davis, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
And this is not in your report, but I'm just curious if you have this expertise because this is something that I've been wondering about. We have a Costco in Folsom, and as you know, that's a huge sales tax generator for any city. El Dorado County is going to have a Costco built just a couple miles away.
Allegedly.
Yes, but it's, I think it's moving forward. My question is, do you have any experience in what that will do to our sales tax revenue? Does it mean a 1% hit to our revenue, a 2% hit?
Yeah. I, I do have experience, and I'll, I'll explain it like this. Costco in particular is very, very focused, when they, when they open up a new store, on the impact of their existing stores. So much so, I'll describe it, that retailers in general, when they're going to go contemplate a new store, the first thing they want to know is how much are they going to lose through what's called cannibalization. Costco is notorious for not wanting to cannibalize their stores. And anecdotally, Costcos are doing $300 million in sales in their California stores. Some of that is also bolstered and driven by gas, their gas sales significantly. So when they're going to go do another store someplace, if the, if some store is doing $400 million, maybe it's too crowded. And they go, I want a $300 million store and another $300 million store. But Costco is in the business to be accretive to their bottom line and their growth. So I'll say that I would not expect significant decline, not knowing more than that, right? Because each, each of these have stories. I'm working on a Costco circumstance as we speak, for another, for, in another city. And that's been my experience, pretty firsthand.
That is encouraging.
But I can't, it's not a...
Right. I, I understand.
When you guys called me and the sales tax revenues have gone down, and you said, well, Ken blew that prediction. If you want to know what I worry about more is Sam's Club. And I'm only saying that because what will that Costco do to Sam's? I don't know.
Right. Okay.
But in the West Coast, Costco is the stronger club, warehouse club, than Sam's Club. And if you notice, Sam's Clubs have closed, not opened, more so than Costcos have opened.
Okay. And, and finally, just kind of a couple of comments and a question. I mean, I, I think there's a lot of things in this report that, that we are already talking about, or, you know, we've already had that idea, some things that we're doing. Obviously, we have very limited funds in this city, and so, you know, when the choice is, well, let's hire an economic development director, or let's hire another police officer, right? That's, we, we have to weigh those decisions very carefully. So just playing devil's advocate here for a second, you know, based on your report, it sounds like we're doing pretty darn well not having an in-house development, economic development person, and not giving incentives and having facade improvement funds and, and that sort of thing. I mean, certainly, could we do more? Could we do better? Yes, you always could, but seems like we're doing okay also.
I think you're doing pretty good.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment on that? Just because I really get a kick out of looking at what surrounding cities are doing and where they're, where, where are they strong, and where do, you know, where, where do they fall short? And I think historically, we, by the way, we used to have an economic developments person on staff, but we lost them in the 2008 cuts, so then we didn't have it. And I think that Folsom has historically been strong because we have a really good reputation. I think we have a reputation for being a great place to live, a great, great schools, we have fantastic trails, we have an amazing amenities that, that people can enjoy. But what I've seen at the same time happening is that Rancho Cordova, which is the city that I worked at for almost 12 years when I first moved to the Sacramento area, used to be really kind of a different city, not very attractive, and now it's, 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 it is thriving, it's attractive. People, people that I, that I talk to that are wanting to move to the Sacramento area are looking at places like Rancho Cordova, like Elk Grove, Roseville, because they're doing something in terms of marketing their cities, they're attracting great businesses. I mean, the, the one that Roseville recently attracted, what it starts with a B.
Bosch.
Yeah. I mean, those are, those are really big things that happen to cities that really do make it a lot better. But I think that, just my own personal opinion is, if we don't put an emphasis on economic development to, to sustain the strengths that we have, we will eventually begin to not become, like, people will eventually realize that the schools in Roseville are just as great, the Elk Grove School District is pretty phenomenal and amazing, and Rancho is part of the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District. But at some point down the road, if we don't continue to put an emphasis on how great of a city we are to sustain ourselves, to be, to stay, to really take our reputation and run with it, at some point, I think things will begin to diminish. And I'm, I, I'm not, I'm, I, I don't know, but it, it just feels that way just because of what I'm seeing our surrounding cities, how, how well they're doing and how they are thriving. And of course, it doesn't help that all three of those cities have a tax measure that they have the excess money that they can invest into their cities and beautify it and do these just amazing, great things. And so I, I think that we have a reputation that we could, that, that makes us attractive, but at some point, does that reputation, is it going to continue to proceed? It's as businesses looked for cities where they want to move to because we have so many other surrounding cities that are truly doing, I think, a great job in, in thriving. Those are my comments.
Well, and some of the ideas behind zoning strategies or implementing this idea of development opportunity reserve, which is density and community benefits, considering forming a tax increment financing district, those things are, you know, they're going, they take resources. And, and so that's, if those are good ideas, then someone is going to have, you would say, well, who's going to implement that? Who's going to explore that? And that's part of the idea behind, you know, somebody at that staff level, for anything that a city does, like anything in life, business decisions should have a return, whether it's a return on investment, public safety, community trails, economic development, these things all need to have a return, and it's your decision on prioritization, you know, of, of those things, and what's important, obviously.
Last question, and then we take our public comment. Is there a way of putting a value on parks and trails, an economic value?
Quantitatively?
I mean, is there some measurement tool in the industry where you could say that those are worth X as it relates to economic development or business attraction, or, you know? It, I, I, excuse me, it's fairly obvious to most people that live here that those tend to be a reason why we live here. Many of us moved here because of them. But it's not the exclusive reason, and it has, at least anecdotally, some effect on businesses choosing to locate here. I'm just wondering if there's any way to, you know, sort of...
Yeah.
Measure that.
Well, let me answer that question. It's not a straightforward yes-no answer, I think, but I think about a city in, in Southern California that asked us to try to help them quantify the amount of attendance to youth sports activities, which had all to do with outdoor sports, recreation, et cetera, and other activities, parades, festivals, et cetera. Was there a way to, to quantify the impact of if those folks spent money, or maybe stayed in a hotel for a two-day tournament? And it's an interesting exercise. We, we didn't end up embarking upon it. We, we, I think it's an interesting thing to do. We actually did some of that for another city. We used Placer AI to track on an annual basis, if you will, for a different city, some of the, the, the different activities in the, in the park area, for a park and rec department. So there could be a way to quantify some of that. It's a little bit harder, I think, necessarily do that, but there can be a way to analyze visits. How many people are coming? How many people are coming to different festivals, parades, events? How many people go to your historic downtown for special occasions? How many people come here for 4th of July? Whatever the occasion is or the event is, and kind of leveraging your outdoor amenities by tracking visits.
And we currently get quarterly reports from Choose Folsom when they come and give us reports, you know?
Yeah.
And they're using Placer AI.
Which, which is great. And Placer AI is a, is not an inexpensive resource, you know? Our company pays for it, so we can help our clients with different types of analyses, obviously. We have trade areas that we analyze for each of these centers using that. So, yeah, it's, it, it, there is some way to quantify it. It's just not a real simple yes/no.
Got it. Okay. Thank you very much. Your presentation's very informative. We do have one request to speak from the public.
Yes, we do, Mayor. So we have one request to speak under this item. Jim Harvell.
I'll just surrender the podium.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hey there, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. I was going to give you the high sign that that was just a placeholder, but I wanted to answer your question about the economic impact of trails. If you guys refer to the economic needs assess, the American River Parkway Economic Needs Assessment, I can get you the, the details of that in the Rails and Trails Conflict in El Dorado County. I went through that thing backwards and forwards. There's a ton of information on how you measure that impact. So, there you go.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. All right. So city staff, are you guys looking, Madam City Manager, for guidance of some sort at this point, or are you going to give us a chance to absorb this?
Exactly, the latter. This was an action item. If there is specific, you know, consensus direction, you want to say like, gee, we're interested in this concept we saw in the report, please come back and, you know, give us a proposal to explore it further. I would welcome that. You can also just absorb it more and we can talk again.
Okay. Anybody have any particular...
No, I'll, I'd like to go through the report, maybe in the next couple of weeks, and then at our next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking that it's going to take a little time to absorb all the information. It, it might be, you know, I don't know, may, God, we're so close to the end of the year now, strangely. It, it might be that when we're approaching the holidays, that we maybe revisit this one and get some, some recommendations from the staff of what to pull from this that may be different than strategies we've already implemented, and kick those around as a group, just a suggestion. Okay, any other comments?
You.
Mayor, this is the final report. I think that's how it is reading on the agenda, right? I think they are almost done working on this one.
We have accepted it. This is their product.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't think at this point we have further direction for Cosmont.
That's, that's what I'm...
Yeah.
It's more for staff.
Okay. I think we're going to have to bring this one back and try and focus in on some, you know, strategic things that we can take, take a crack at, so. All right, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody. I go on to item number four.
So the next item tonight, under scheduled presentations, item number four, update to city council on the city's water vision.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Kozlowski, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, Environmental Water Resources Director. Just hopefully we could provide you a quick update on our water vision process that we're working on tonight. I'll just cover the project team, the stakeholder group, the purpose and goals of the project, the approach, where we are to date, and just some of the next steps. So this is the project team, myself, Todd Eising, and EWR, Chris and Christine from our communications team, and then Rob Natoli, Stephanie Arndt, and Jennifer Rogers from the WSC team, and that's Water Systems Consulting. The stakeholder group consists of businesses within the city, education within the city, so the school district and the Folsom Lake College. We have non-governmental agencies and also various city commissions and committees that are a part of the stakeholder group. This is just a further breakdown. We have council member Chalum Chirla as the representative from city council, and I won't read the list, but you can see here who is all part of this stakeholder group. And we do have a broad reach within Sacramento County, reaching out to the Sacramento Groundwater Authority, Regional Water Authority, and the Sacramento Water Forum. So we do have other regional purveyors and JPAs that are part of this process. And then just some here locally within Folsom, Intel, Kikaman, Gekkon, and Kikaman and Gekkon were important to this process because anytime you're considering a new water supply or a new source, water quality can be a potential impact on certain businesses, so it's important to have their feedback as we look at different alternatives. So it's important to have their feedback as we look at different alternatives. So the purpose and goals, it was really to develop a plan for a reliable and resilient water supply for the city. Effectively, we were looking 50 years out, which, you know, under current conditions gets to the city's build-out scenario, obviously earlier than that, but that was kind of the far end of our vision. We're looking at infrastructure limitations, you know, obviously we wanted to get community engagement, which is why we developed the stakeholder group, looking at changing weather patterns that were part of an American River Basin study that looked at the American River Basin watershed more closely. And then identifying any future or current state or federal regulations that the city will have to comply with or be on the lookout for as we move forward into the future. So our goals was first and foremost, involve our stakeholder group. And we also have about 20 members of the community who either regularly attend the meetings or email after the fact. So we record, we've recorded all three meetings so far. We put those on the city's website. We have a dedicated webpage for the process. And all the videos are available for the community to come back and watch. And so we get a lot of feedback from those that aren't able to physically come to the meeting through follow-up after because they've had a chance to see the presentations, but also verbally hear and listen to what we've presented. We also want to reflect what we hear from the stakeholders, both those that are part of the formal stakeholder group, but also any members of the public, because we don't want to tune out or not listen to some of the ideas that they have or any of the feedback they provide us. We ultimately want to develop a water supply portfolio that we can bring back to City Council. And as I mentioned, we're looking at a plan for 50 years or up to 50 years out. So the approach, this is kind of the eight items. The first three that are highlighted in blue are what we've done to date. So we've identified community values and objectives. We've evaluated the existing water supply system, so from Folsom Reservoir to the city and then from the city's water treatment plant out to our customers. Looking now at the process of screening different new supply alternatives. So what are some of the options that we have, whether it's surface water, groundwater, inter ties with neighboring agencies, recycled water, is that an option? The use of remediated groundwater from Aerojet? So those are all the different potential options that we're looking into and trying to put those into different buckets through the lens of what we've heard from our community and the stakeholders and try to put those into different portfolios that can maybe more focus on, okay, are we trying to meet an emergency need? Are we trying to meet, say, several years of a drought impact? You know, what are we, what are we trying to meet? And our next meeting, which is a month from now, is to develop these different portfolios and present those to the stakeholder group. From there, we'll evaluate these with stakeholder feedback to see which ones might sound good to put and lump together and say, okay, here's a good portfolio. Here's maybe what we would consider number one, maybe this is number five. And it can vary because maybe it's a water quality concern, maybe it's a financial concern, maybe it's the volume of water concern. So we're looking at all those different things. And then ultimately, we will take all that feedback, define these portfolios, develop kind of an implementation plan or a roadmap as to when the city might consider doing these different things and then bring all this back at a future date, most likely sometime in second or third quarter of 2025. And hopefully have a nice report that is very comprehensive, not only for us at the staff level, City Council, but any member of the public that wishes to review or read the document. So just to recap to date, we did do a community survey early in the process as well to our stakeholder group. It was open for six weeks. We received 228 responses to the survey. This was put in the various social media platforms from the city. So thanks to Christine and Chris for getting that out in the newsletter, on the city's website. So these were all opportunities where the public had a chance to fill in this, I think it was a 15-question survey related to what they felt about water, you know, was quality important, was, you know, the cost important, was, you know, just asking what their concerns were and what they valued about water for the city. And the goal ultimately was to figure out what is it that not only the stakeholders are interested in, but hearing back from the community and what are their interests? What is maybe higher in terms of their objectives or their values or their goals as it relates to water supply? And then maybe what's less important? Not necessarily discounting what might be less important, but just getting a better understanding of what the community felt. So we did develop from that first and second meeting, the planning objectives as we go through the process. So these, this is kind of the foundation of what we look back to. And so as you can see on the left, what the community values in water, so high-quality water, affordable water, obviously trusting in the water supply, knowing that when the, the time is to turn the tap, that water is going to come out. Obviously having a reliable supply, being resilient at the city and using water efficiently. And I would imagine if you polled the state or the county, you'd probably get most of these in that. So this wasn't really a surprise for us. And then from there, we developed the desired outcomes that we're looking for and that the stakeholder group and the community highlighted for us. And then the process goals as to how we are going to go about looking at the portfolios through different lenses or different screens or filters, if you want to call it that.
I, I have to ask
Yes.
If you don't mind me interrupting you. High-quality, affordable, reliable, resilient water supply that people don't trust? How do you, because we've talked about this topic for many years because I once was on this, on the Utility Commission. We have an extremely high-quality, very affordable, super-reliable, and by all accounts, one of the more resilient water supplies here in Folsom.
Yes.
And yet, this would indicate to me that there's people that still have trust issues with that.
Yes, there, there are. People that filled out the, uh, the survey do have questions related to, is there enough? Will we have enough? Is there, you know, and I don't like to
Has there been, well, I guess then my follow-up question is a simple one. Is there a supply number that would make people feel like we have the backup of all backups and that they can trust it because we have 10X what we need?
I think if there was a way that, that we said we needed, say, 25,000 acre feet at build-out, that we can present whatever type of portfolio that meets all this criteria that could provide 25,000 acre feet and there's no limit in a reduction. I think from the general public survey, that's my feeling. From the stakeholder group and the ones that are in the room, I don't think that threshold is we need 100% every day, all the time, no matter what the condition or scenario that the city's facing. So I think there's two distinct perspectives, I guess, from the general public survey versus the, the stakeholder group. And, and I think a part of that, and I think a big part of that, is sitting through the first couple of meetings where we really had an opportunity to explain the city's water supplies, what the contracts mean, what, what has the drought done or not done from 2012 to 2017? Because that's most recent and that's very fresh in our minds. And then all the layers that have been added since then from the state's level and the state perspective. I, I think that perspective is different because they've had an opportunity to go through that process, but also ask those questions along the way and get that direct feedback in our meetings.
Got it. Okay.
So we did develop a screening process. And, and again, this was building consensus around affordable, reliable, and resilient. Those were kind of the three higher-level items that we heard quite a bit more of, more so than the trust one, but that was one that popped up more so than maybe I would have thought of at the beginning of the process. And this just describes kind of what we're looking at every time we talk about the, the different portfolios so that our stakeholder group and the public knows what we mean by affordable, reliable, and resilient. So next steps, we are developing the portfolios using the input from the seven, the July meeting. We also have a short survey out with our stakeholder group and the members that have shown interest in the general public, just to get some feedback as to where they think some of the priorities might be in the portfolio development, just to make sure we're reflecting where they might weight certain criteria, is cost the most important or is it in the middle or is it least important? So we're trying to just get those weighting factors dialed in. Next meeting is Tuesday, October 15th. And as we always tell people, you can go to the city's website to find out more, but also review the, the last three meetings that we have. And then as soon as the fourth meeting's available, we put it up there and start planning for the, the next part of the process. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay. Start with YK this time, since you're on this panel.
Yeah, no, I think I probably not have many questions, but, you know, it's when we are there as first two meetings explaining the population growth is growing and water consumption is coming down, right? That, that's the, you know, yes, we can probably, you know, take some credit from the drought and how the state has given, but overall, it's the Folsom residents. They seriously took, water is gold. That message is, went very well. And of course, some of the programs we have put together, like save the, you know, the, remove the grass and replace with the water efficiencies and, and also the South of 50, how we plan the water efficiency, front yards and backyards, 30% of the reduction. So all those things are helping, even though the population is growing, water levels are coming. I, I, I hear what, you know, Marcus is saying about the public. They always remember that growth and that's why the left side columns are all reliable enough, you know? That's why they are asking so many times those questions.
Sure.
Yeah.
Education is a continuous process.
It is, always. It, it, it actually is one of the conversations that seems to always come up is, there's so much growth happening.
Yeah.
Is there enough water? And I, I tell them, there is absolutely confidently, yes, enough water. And it's, it seems like people don't want to believe me when I tell them. It's, yes, we have enough water.
But I saw the lake get all the way to the bottom.
I know, I know. But it is, it is, and I, I always refer back to, you know, your presentations, but it is, I wish there was a way that we could communicate to people that, rest assured that there is enough water and
And the, the good news of the story is that there's always new people coming to live here in Folsom with us and everybody gets their turn to ask that question.
Yes, yes, that's maybe that's what it is.
Good education.
And if anybody's ever asking you directly and they want to talk about it, you can point them in, in my direction because, I mean, I have no issue explaining it. I don't know that they're going to believe me either, but I have no issue presenting all the facts, all the information and, you know, ultimately letting them decide, I guess, what their opinion might be, but
Although I have to admit that I am highly entertained by people that I meet who have moved here, say, within the last five years. And they move here because they, you know, they're attractive, Folsom's very attractive. And then they get here and then it's, stop the growth. It is, we're going, and, and it is, it, it really is one of the, you know, best conversations that I have with people about growth and, but always it comes down to water.
A rite of passage. Okay. Excellent. Everyone should trust Marcus. He knows what he's doing. Nothing, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Excellent presentation. Okay, that brings us all the way to our consent calendar at long last. Does anybody want to pull anything for discussion?
Nobody wants to pull anything. I'll go ahead and move five through 12.
Mayor, I'll take the 11 out.
11 out, okay.
For a quick comment.
So five through 10 and number 12, is that friendly amendment, amendment accepted?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Could you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Chalamchela?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes. And then could you read us number 11 so that we can discuss that?
Yes, so item 11, under the Consent Calendar, Resolution Number 11257, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a consultant services agreement with Dewberry for construction management and inspection services and appropriation of funds from the Community Facilities District Fund and authorize a partial notice to proceed for pre-construction tasks for an amount not to exceed $200,000 for the Phase Two Water Improvement Project, Phase Two A.
Mayor, it's more comments, Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah. Looking at this details here, it is, you know, more healthy outreach for the vendor community. That's very notable. Two other things which, you know, I just want to give kudos to Marcus and, Marcus and his team. When there is a very competitive nature of vendors competing for this business, introducing that interview process and a rigorous interview process. Because, you know, anybody can prepare the approach and the documents from GenAI, but talking to them, that's a big one. I just want to, you know, give him the kudos. And more important, negotiating the cost. So I just want to call this out. I don't want just to be, you know, consent approved for this hard work, you know, saving $310,000, you know, from this kind of negotiation. I want to call out and thank him and his team as well for saving that money. So that's the positive comment, and I can move this one if no one has any.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and a congratulations on the deck.
Yes, thank you, Marcus.
Okay, Councilmembers Chalamchela?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes. Okay, councilmembers, any requests for future agenda items this evening?
I have one request. Since our last budget where we implemented a hot team, and I believe that we had some individuals hired in July, but, so if July, August, September, maybe after the end of this month, if we can get a report from the hot team on the plan of action to reduce homelessness, maybe the data that they are identifying and tracking? Are they utilizing any KPI? And with the grant's past ruling, what have been some of the changes that our city has made? And then a plan of action or a plan to redirect if we experience an increase or a decrease in homelessness?
Sure, we can bring that back. No problem.
Thank you.
I, I will say, we have received two reports via email the last two months. Have you seen those?
Reports? No.
Yeah, from the hot team.
Oh, okay.
I, I did ask
Who's it from?
I did, I, from me, via Chief Hillman. I did ask Chief Hillman when the hot team was formed. I asked him for monthly reports on progress and so I've received two of those, kind of internal documents at this point, but I can ask him to more formally present here.
So before then, let me look at those. I don't know why I haven't, haven't popped up, but I will search for them.
Okay.
Yeah. Before we, I don't, I don't need a presentation if I have data.
Okay, wonderful. Yes, you, you have data.
Okay.
Awesome. Sarah, anything? YK?
I know.
Okay. Excellent. City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor. The Folsom Fire and Police Departments will host a 9/11 Remembrance Gathering to honor those who lost their lives and commemorate the ultimate sacrifices made by first responders. The gathering will begin promptly at 8:46 a.m. tomorrow at Folsom City Lions Park near the gazebo and the Folsom Public Library. Also, the City of Folsom will hold a series of town hall meetings on Folsom's financial outlook and funding needs. City leaders, including myself, will provide a presentation on the city's financial outlook and funding needs, followed by a Q and A session for community members to share input and ask questions. And we tried to provide a balance of locations and forums. So Thursday, September 26th at 6 p.m., it will be at the Folsom Public Library. We'll have another one on Tuesday, October 1st at 11 a.m. on Zoom, if you prefer a virtual platform. And finally, Thursday, October 10th at 6 p.m. at Mangini Ranch Elementary School. So we have a, a location south of 50. Vista del Lago High School students will celebrate homecoming with a parade Wednesday, September 18th, this next week. Motorists are advised that Golf Link Drive, Golf Links Drive between Empire Oaks Elementary School and Vista del Lago High School will be closed from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. to accommodate the parade. And the Folsom Fire Department invites the community to a formal dedication and grand opening ceremony for the new Fire Station 34 on Thursday, September 26th. Fire Station 34 is located at 3255 Westwood Drive in the Folsom Ranch community. It's a modern, single-story facility, and it is the first fire station south of Highway 50, a huge accomplishment. The event will begin at 10 a.m. and will conclude with a fire engine push-in ceremony. The grand opening ceremony will also include tours the new station and light refreshments. And finally, the Folsom Public Works Department is conducting a study to improve traffic safety and would like to hear about your experiences driving, biking, walking, or using other transportation modes in the city. Share your input on, on an interactive map or take a survey. Find the links on the city's website. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Fantastic. Okay, any council comments?
I'll make one quick one.
Sure.
You know, the circus in town for two weeks, you know, that gives that small-town feel, you know? I was, I stopped by there, all the little kids going on candy and all those. I think those kind of events, maybe we had to do something different for them, just once in a thing, you know, once in a year thing. So I just want to pass that one here because we, I, people wants to always keep the small-town So I just want to pass that one here because we, I, people wants to always keep the small-town feel, how? Events like that.
Very good.
So don't know what we can do. We don't maybe give the rebates and all those, but something.
Maybe we could throw a rodeo on the 4th of July.
Something. That's one. And the other one is, you know, we had a, a school two-by-two meeting with myself. You were there for a brief, for coffee. And Rancher is going ahead with SFID for, if it's no meaning for you, the numbers, they are going to the ballot to raise more money to upgrade their schools, Ranch Code of City, because based on the, you know, 60-year, 70-years-old schools. And we briefly touched on what we are going to do about the combined grants. I think it's very soon we have to talk what we are going to do for city of Folsom. So that's one we discussed at high level and also so many security implementations we discussed for kids and e-bikes and all those. So it's all good stuff going on. So that's from school two-by-two. Otherwise, happy weekend.
All right. Anything?
Just two things. I'm sorry I can't attend the 9/11 ceremony tomorrow. I have a Saks sewer meeting, so I will be doing that. But I just want to give a heartfelt thank to, thank you to Christine and Chris and Andrew. And I know Michelle Kasama and Elaine, of course, were very involved in the Spirit of Folsom Awards. So everything turned out beautifully. Thank you very much.
Excellent. And then I just have one quick update that our search for a replacement for the city manager, we have engaged officially Bob Marion Associates to help us with that. There will be a series of opportunities for people to give some input, but as it stands